Ready.
Okay.
Is it ten thirty-three?
You're giving Laura any lessons on this whole setup?
I was showing her, I was showing her a little bit about it after session yesterday. It's all written down, but you want, you gotta really see it.
As a side note, I want to talk to you about record detention and these recordings.
Okay.
So, so, not sure how we need to open this. I guess we just go down through the list. And the commissioners requesting the board appoint as president, so we need to have a conversation about the organization of this board. So I'll open that up for conversation. Set that up to do a rotation here last year. I guess it's open for conversation.
I mean, my, I guess I'll, I'll just start off by saying is, is that, you know, we've got a, we've got a big election year this year. I think that, you know, you know, after, I don't know, I mean, my, my, my thought is, is just kind of, I didn't, I didn't see any issues with what we had going this year as far as a lot of these appointments and a lot of these other things. And I just would say, if it's not broke right now, you know, why fix it? I'd just say to make it easy in order to just basically, not even easy, but just to make it sensible and not have to make a whole lot of moving parts, just, we leave things the way that is, and then after, you know, March, will we decide if there's other changes or something, but just, you know, I don't know. If you guys agree with that or disagree with that or, or not, I think that, you know, we've, we seem to have had a pretty efficient year this year of being able to cover everything. And, you know, I took on the vice president role with the solid waste, and Blake took on the president role with the juvenile detention. But other than that, I mean, I, I don't see that there's really, I mean, unless I'm missing something.
It doesn't matter to me, I, I'm the odd man out, so whatever I would say would be...
Well, I don't think that that's the case, I think that it's just, I don't know.
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to sound self-serving here, because...
You will.
This is...
Okay.
Always count on yourself.
This is good.
Say what's on your mind, sir.
This is a...
Yeah.
This is, this is your opportunity to talk to each other about things.
That's right, this is a fun position.
We need to sell sponsorships.
Not making major decisions, you're not voting on anything today, you're just talking about...
Hold it out there.
To get things in line first.
We're not, we're not voting today?
No.
When do we, when do we actually...
You actually voted on this at reord?
At the reord meeting.
This is your opportunity to discuss...
This is the, the second Monday. To be right after the, the weekend at the Fairman's Convention.
I mean, I...
Oh, I thought we were doing this today, so...
No, I think by law, we're not allowed to make any, I mean, it's an open meeting, but we can't, we can't make a decision in this.
It's just a work session to talk about the things that you have to do at the reord meeting on the eleventh.
Yeah, I mean, no, it's happened in the past, is I think the, the reord meetings kind of snuck up on everybody, now you're all sitting in the meeting.
Right.
You're really not all clear on where everybody's at, and this is to kind of help you flesh that all out ahead of time.
I do want to bring up one point, that last year when I was in the succession for the presidency, you made quite a to-do and a point about the fact that I couldn't hold that job because of my adversarial relationship with the judge. So how's that working out for you?
Okay.
Just asking, sir.
Since this is being recorded, I'll reserve comment on that, but... There's certainly not been any adversarial relationship that I've been promoting in any shape or form, to be sure. At least I don't think so.
I think that the one thing that I definitely see is, is I, and I think that we've already changed this, but is as far as the Director of Water Resources and Sanitary, you know, that obviously is going to need to be changed for, for, for Jerry Morgan.
Yeah.
That, stuff like that, I mean, is pretty simple. You know, with Linda Bruhenny, David Lehrer, I think that those, those positions are going to remain the same with Christine, though she's going to be leaving us in a little bit for maternity leave, I think that Christine is doing a great job, Linda's doing a great job, Dave does a great job, I think that we need to just, I, my position would be is, is those are going to stay the same, these directors' positions are going to stay the same.
The only, the only thing I've kind of heard talked to you individually, is there may be some possible changes considered in the, in the meeting time and schedule, because there's been some issues at the earlier meeting.
I think that's a, it was a noble experiment, but it, it's, it's cause, you know, for a reaction, there's a reaction. And the reaction is that the meetings are very long. It's not unusual to have a two-hour meeting. And having them at nine in the morning, it wasn't, I, I didn't write down the date, but within the last three months, I get here usually a little before eight on meeting mornings, and Christie had to redo the agenda four times in that hour before the nine o'clock meeting. And then I saw the final agenda, the actual working agenda, when I walked in here, it was on the desk. Usually we get a copy so that we can peruse it and, and I, I, I hate to say it, because time's valuable for all of us, but I, I think that the meeting time, we should consider going back to the ten o'clock time, and I think we need to have them, I don't want to say two times a week, because I'm not sure that we always need two times, but I think we need six meetings a month. The last thing I would say is, for my two cents, when I was first appointed here, I gave a list of things that I wanted to see accomplished, and one of those was evening meetings. As a matter of reality, our evening meetings have turned into one of two things. And these are evening business meetings. They've either turned into a gripe session by someone coming in with an ax to grind, which, oh, okay, but, or, we've had informational programming, which is good, but we don't need to have that in a business meeting, we could schedule that at any time. And I, I think about the marijuana initiative, and there were a couple other things that have gone down, but don't hold me to a month or a year, because it's, it's, it's in, it's in the recent past, meaning the last two years. I, I really think that it's hard on the staff. I can't say that some of the clerical errors would have been caught. We had one this morning that may or may not have been caught if the individual agencies weren't working under time constraints to get things, and they miss limited in partnership or whatever, I, that could happen under any circumstance, I can't. But a short timeframe doesn't help it. So I, I would like to see us go back to some meeting schedule that was historical.
But maybe not two meetings every single week.
Right, I, I don't know that we have that, but every other week you have that second meeting or something. Remembering, remembering that, and I don't know what the holiday schedule is for next year.
You have a list.
But I know...
You put it in your...
On, on Thanksgiving...
You have a list that says use for all John County payroll, and next to it has all the list of the observed holidays, because that was one of the things that we were talking about.
Friday, Monday, 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 Monday.
Choose this...
Friday, Thursday, Thanksgiving is the only day that...
Veterans Day is a Friday, which doesn't have anything to do with your meeting at Thanksgiving, but the rest of them are Mondays.
Friday and Monday don't really interfere with our meeting schedule.
Unless you choose to cancel the session on the day after the holiday.
Yeah, the issue with the Monday, Monday vacation day, day off, is that usually Monday is a pretty busy prep day for a meeting, which is why very often meetings are canceled for the next day.
So why can't we move the meeting to Wednesday for those weeks, and then we never lose it? But to be quite honest with you, if I could pipe in, just to clear the record, I know, Blake, that you say that, you know, you, one of the couple of things, it was the night meeting and the recorded meetings, but if you look at the record, to be quite honest with you, I'd been pushing for night meetings from when I first came.
Yeah, you have.
And as far as recorded meetings, I pushed for that too, and it just, I never could get the support on the board, because I don't know if they didn't want to be transparent or something, but I heard that a bunch of times, but ultimately, I, I mean, that was something that I kind of brought to the forefront, I remember talking to you outside about that, actually, when you were, when you, when you were here as a spectator in the one, one thing. But going back to the morning meetings, I think part of the reason that our meetings go on forever is that there's just a lot of, a lot of BS, not sticking to the, to business. I can tell you that, you know, and maybe it's, it's a situation, if you feel that these meetings are taking forever, then I, I, I would say that, then I would make a motion on, on the, on the next business day to put me in as president of this board, because I'll move this, this meeting along the way it's supposed to be. There's too much talking, there's too much nonsense that's, that's being brought up that is not business. And, and I, and I, and I don't, I sit back here and I don't say too much, because it's just the way it is, but we need to stick to the facts, stick to the meeting, and move forward. But talking about, you know, personal, you know, life experiences and vacations and all this other stuff, let's do that on, on, on your own time. When we're, when we're dealing with, with, with the meeting, I think staying with the meeting, and I, and I mean, perfect example is like Kelly Balcones, you know, they appreciate the morning meetings earlier because of the fact that they know that they can start their day and go. When we started to, and we looked at this, you know, you know, from, from the beginning was, is the, the thing was, is people said they have to come in, they're, they're pretty much in a stall pattern until ten o'clock, and then they come to the meeting, and then they go to, they, they, they go back to then their day. This here gives them the ability that they know the night before they're coming in for the initial meeting, first thing in the morning for nine AM when it starts, and they get through the meeting and their day is complete, and there's not this, you know, this, this jumble. I just think that, you know, the night meetings are, you know, have, I mean, whether it's a, you know, people want to come in and, you know, I don't know, what, what did you say, they, they come in and complain or something?
A gripe session.
A gripe session.
I mean, they could come in at any time.
Some, some people, they, I, I, my, my dispute with, with what you're saying is, if they're so in, in thrall these groups, and remember Kelly walks across the parking lot, but I, she's never said to me she was enamored by the nine o'clock meeting, how come so many of them come in late? Some, many of them don't have the, their paperwork filled out, they're waiting for the last minute document from, from the prosecutor's office, which is not the prosecutor's fault, I mean, they, they have a workload that's unbelievable. But more importantly, and I would, I would, I think we need to try and do some research on this, is the length of our agendas and the length of our meetings has a direct reflection of how many items, agenda items are on there. I, I can remember times when we, when I first started, so I, I, maybe my memory's a little faulty, there were a dozen, fifteen agenda items. Now, it's not uncommon to see twenty-four, twenty-five items on an agenda, they're two pages long, both sides. And while I will completely agree that the pace might be picked up without, without an issue, the fact is that some of these cases deserve discussion by, by us. And if we keep it on topic, I don't, I don't see a real issue with that. And with regard to your first comments about the night meetings and the film, yeah, you, you called for them, but you didn't have support.
Right.
So I supported you. You know, I remember there was some grumbling when I sent out something that said I was instrumental, and, and the people that complained about that needed a dictionary, because you may have called for it, but until you had a second vote, you didn't have it. So I was instrumental in getting those things accomplished. And I think that, I, I, I definitely think the videotaping, although I hate it, and hated it when I was on the school board, because it, it documents the good and the bad. It's, it's a very valuable resource for, for transparency. The, the issue with the, the timing, I, I don't see what's happening in the individual departments as far as they can get it done and get in and out in time. I see what it does here, which you don't see, because you don't, you're not usually here until the last minute. But the point being that we have people running around this place at the last minute, Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning, if you're here, you'll see the confusion going back and forth with, we don't have this paperwork from so-and-so, we don't have that from somebody else. Will an hour make that much difference? I don't know. But I think it would, I think it would help. But, but that's based on, that's based on the input that I get from the staff. The staff would like to see it moved back.
Or if there's, if there's that much of a concern, that Monday is a, is a, is a busy, busy day as far as, you know, it's right after the weekend, people are rushing to get things done, then we move the meeting to Wednesday, and then you have Monday and Tuesday to get things done.
Well...
And, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't like the word historical, because it's, you know, you know, we, we, we have to look at, you know, you can't do something today just because you did it yesterday, because if it was wrong yesterday, you're doing it wrong today. And at, at the end of the day, is, is that we have to be able to stop, maybe to, to look at things, say we go to a historical meeting set, I think that, you know, one of the things that I could tell you, and I've heard this from, I've heard this actually from, from Joe Cattell, I've heard this from the, the Community Economic Development, it's having the, the morning meeting, having the one meeting a week, has made our departments more efficient, because they've, and they, they've produced stuff, whereas a lot of stuff in the past has gone to the wayside to say, well, we'll just get it in on Thursday, or we'll just get it in on, because we've got a, we've got this. I think that, you know, at the end of the day, some of the stuff, and I agree with, Skip has brought this up, and I, I think you brought it up too, last, last December, was all of a sudden, we got bombarded with all this stuff right at the last minute, and it's like, okay, you waited till when to get this stuff done, and now all of a sudden, we got, we, we have to, we have to hurry up and, and get this stuff done. I think that part of that is bad planning, and, and I think that there's just a lot of stuff that we may, we may be doing that, I, I get the whole thing with, with Laura having to review things, and, you know, and I don't know if Laura's reviewing all the stuff, maybe there's other prosecutors involved in reviewing some of the stuff, but...
Some cases.
You know, it's, I get that there's a, there's a time thing, and that's one of the reasons I had brought up, whether we try to have somebody to help Jim, whether we look to have somebody maybe part-time to give him some, some additional relief, or whatever it is, you know, I, I'm, I understand that, but at the end of the day, I think that you've got to set a, you've got to set a deadline, and just like yesterday, to be quite honest with you, you know, I called Christine, I called Dave, and he was, he was out in a meeting, and I called Christine, there was, you know, we got the agenda, and all of a sudden, the agenda had, you know, these four appointments, never had really a chance to even review a resume, to look at anything, and I was like, you know, I just don't feel comfortable to do, just to basically rubber stamp some of this stuff, and I asked for, you know, if there would be a possibility to hold off on that till we could do that. I think part of the problem too is, is that, I think that, you know, and, and correct me if this is, if, if we're required by law to send out that agenda, you know, publicly, but I think that the initial agenda of these appointments, or that, that agenda maybe to come out in the morning for us to review it, if there's a question on that, then we basically have, you know, sixty minutes to get back with any questions, comments, or suggestions. If we don't, then at, at, at sixty-one minutes, that agenda then goes public. And that's what we, we need to stick to it. We all have phones, we all have the ability of getting our, our, our agenda, and I, I read it within, you know, ten seconds, fifteen seconds of receiving it. And I caught that right away, and I called her right away.
Can I just add something?
Good.
You are sent a tentative agenda...
Right.
With all the supporting documents of everything that I received from the departments on Wednesday.
Right, right.
And that is your opportunity to go through that list, review those documents, and then by Monday, get back to me to tell me whether anything needs to be pulled on there.
Knowing that there's going to be some other stuff that gets dumped on there after.
The final version then gets sent out around noon on Monday.
Okay.
So there, there is your...
So were those appointments on that? I, I, you know something, and I...
And all the applications and stuff were attached.
They were reappointments, by the way, they were reappointments, they'd already been sitting in there, and we hadn't heard complaints about the people, we're just trying to stir the pot. Let me add, let me add this, and I...
This is everything I've forgotten that was sent to you.
Okay. I know this is going to cause some serious issues between the gentleman on my right and myself, but a, you know, all of this is, is interesting, the debate over the meeting schedule and so on, but we all make the same rate, we all make the same mandated amount of money. And if we have two meetings per, per week, that's a hundred and four, a hundred and four meetings annually. That changes by some that are on a Thursday or next to a holiday or something to that extent. But if you do that and divide it into our pay, we make five hundred and thirty-three dollars roughly per meeting. Last year, we had fifty-seven meetings, which equated to nine hundred and seventy-four dollars per meeting. Ralph missed nine of those meetings last year, which took him down to forty-eight meetings, which increased his meeting rate to eleven hundred and fifty-six dollars and change per meeting. Moving them from ten o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, if I owned a retail store, would be a tremendous personal advantage to me. So I question whether or not some of the objection by my esteemed colleague is sincere, or whether some of it is to a degree self-serving. But that's, that's neither here nor there, it's just in the eye of whoever wants to think about it. But we make a lot of money. And it's essentially, if you cut the meetings in half, well, we didn't give ourselves a raise, because we make the same amount of money, but we sure gave ourselves a, a perk that we don't show up as much, and I don't, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's fair to the constituency. And it's not fair to our staff to have to run around like, like crazy and get things at the last minute, and all departments are guilty of it. Whether it's the engineers, or JFS, or, or Community Development, or whatever, at one point in time or another, they're all rushing around. With respect to the end-of-the-year rush, I think that's just happens, because they have to close the books out up at the auditor's office, so there's people running around. This year, there were two or three items that had to be handled at that last meeting, so that the page, the checks could be cut for it. Is that a, is that poor planning? Maybe.
Some of it.
Some of it is, but I wouldn't say...
Not all of it.
Some of it is just circumstances that happen. I just think that we need to go back, you know, historical, Ralph makes a very good point, don't repeat history if it's bad, but not all history is bad. And sometimes when you make a change, it's, it's not the, it's not the answer. I think you make a change to try it, I mean, not, and venture nothing gained, but if it, if that change is causing problems, I think you have to reevaluate it. That's it.
I guess, just to, to, to basically restate my position as, and to comment on, on what was said as far as, you know, I don't take a tally on who makes what number of meetings here, I, I'm not here to be the attendance guard and, you know, to, to be the hall monitor. So as far as, as far as that goes, you know, I, I have a, I have a business in this county. I ran for this position not for a monetary amount, I didn't, never looked at it as being, how much do I make per meeting? I think that's, that, that's, that's not, that was never a, a position of mine of looking at, nor do I, I really look at that. As far as, I, I ran because I, I feel that I was able to bring good change to the, to the county, to initiate some good policies, and to put, you know, some, some things into perspective. As far as, this is kind of a surprise to me, because for the past year that we've been doing the nine o'clock meeting, I've not heard a single complaint from Dave, I've not heard a single complaint from Christine, I've not heard a single complaint from the directors of the different positions in the, in the county, but of, on the other side of it, I've heard nothing but compliments. And, and I, I just, so, so for me, this is a surprise. As far as, you know, you wanted to make changes and wanted to do this, I, you know, I think that we could ask for some, some feedback from some of the, some of the directors possibly, to see if that's the case, we could possibly talk to Laura to see if there's a possibility of moving a meeting to Wednesday, if that's going to give us another day. I don't know why we have to be stuck on Tuesdays, and as far as, you know, with the holidays being on the Mondays, we don't lose that meeting if we, if we're on a Wednesday, because it's a, it, we would have a preparation day for Tuesday and get into Wednesday. I think at the end of the day, it's just, we're wasting a lot of time talking about something that's very miniscule, and I think that, you know, my position stands the same as far as, you know, as far as with, with the specific positions here on this, on this thing here, I, I would say that on, on Tuesday, if we're going to have a meeting on Tuesday to, to discuss, well, it won't be till, I believe, the eleventh of January, and, you know, I would, I, my position is going to be, is if I were to take the table first, I would just say to move, other than a few clerical changes of some of the different positions and retirees and stuff, that we, we move forward to, to retain the same, same, same as we did this year. And I would just ask that, you know, both commissioners understand, I think if you just looked at the tape today, I think that you would see how much time could be saved in these meetings that are making all these lengthy meetings, you know, I think, you know, we could, we could cut a lot of that down by reducing a lot of long-winded conversation, both on my right and my left.
Do you want to add anything to that one director's meeting that you were attending, where we talked about meeting schedule?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm going to add a lot.
I'm just going to continue here patiently.
I wouldn't expect that. Okay. First of all, I would love to add up the friendly banter that occurs, which gives people comfort, eases the tension oftentimes in the room, add up the time associated with that, given, and with the meeting time, and you find that it's miniscule, the value associated with having that friendly banter within the room, I think that's a, that's just my personal take, the personality thing, and that's just the way that it is. I, I feel that people ought to be comfortable when they come into this room and not feel tension or, you know, pressure or whatever, and that like, it's the mood of the room a little bit. Relative to the organization, given the political season that we're entering into, and the nature and the tensions that might occur there, I can see some value in keeping the current board situation.
Might occur?
Might occur. I can see some value in maintaining the current board structure. I would be open-minded to making whatever changes the board feels appropriate, but I can see an argument for that. I think that we've done a good job this year relative to our individual appointed positions in getting the jobs done in those appointed positions. And so I don't see any reason to make any radical change there. I'm probably going to be attending the Department of Development meetings, whether I sit on that board or not, just because I want to get more educated on that. Relative to the meeting schedules, and that's... Relative to the meeting schedules and that whole conversation that occurred. First of all, we're not paid for meetings. We're paid for our judgment, our value, our ability to be able to make good decisions for this county. There is nobody at this table, I don't think, who doesn't put in additional time outside of the meetings. And I think that the people in this room, Dave and Christie will acknowledge that there's probably nobody that puts in more time than I do in terms of, you know, attending meetings, being in the office, going to other meetings and just doing homework in general. And many of us, and I'm sure Ralph's included in this because I know he's got a computer in his office which is set up to access the county information. Oftentimes, when I'm at home, I'm in my office working on the county system that I have. And you know this because I call into the office and I ask you questions and I send you emails and do all that stuff. So, you don't have to be in this office to be conducting the business of the county. And I don't think there's anybody at this table who doesn't do that. I mean, we all put in an enormous amount of time. It's not about meetings. It's about making good decisions and that's the value that we all bring to this table, all three of us. We're paid to make heady decisions which are important to this county. With that said, relative to the meetings, the meetings are about conducting the county business. I think we need to make some improvements in how we conduct county business. We've already talked about the fact that, and by the way, I don't think the length of the meetings are significant. If we're here two hours, so what? We're being paid to do the county business. That's the reason we ran, that's the reason we're here. If it took us eight hours, that's why we're here. And generally speaking, the longest that I've ever seen a meeting taken is two. Generally, we're in here thirty minutes to forty-five minutes and we're out of here. So there's nothing significant, even on a three-page or a four-page agenda that we have. We usually rattle through those pretty quick. Most of the time, it's administrative stuff with the county engineer or the board. The longest ones have to do with the Department of Development and some of these we oughta ask them more questions on, I think, not less questions. But I don't think that the meetings, generally speaking, are lengthy. The issue I have with the meetings right now is that sometimes on a timing perspective, and I do think that departments are getting better at getting, meeting the deadlines, getting the paperwork, and Christine can confirm this or not. The challenge gets to be timing-wise. If they miss that one Tuesday meeting and it happens to be a holiday somewhere in that sequence, then, and there's a deadline involved, it may be three weeks before they can get something processed. That's an issue we need to talk about. We need to figure out how we're gonna get through that. Because I do think that there's some improvements that we can make to make that efficient. Nobody should have to wait three weeks to get a decision made on something, especially when it's county business. So, we need to put it on the table, figure out, okay, how do we deal with that when we've got, from a sequence standpoint, some issues? And if we've got a holiday coming up, maybe we establish a special meeting in there someplace just to allow, a safety valve to get that out. The other thing that we can do, and we've been talking about this, and I'd like to see this as part of the reorganization, if there's any way we can do this, and that is a lot of the stuff that's on our agendas is administrative stuff that we don't need to make a decision on. I mean, we don't need to talk about, today we did a Boy Scout resolution. Yeah, that takes time. But that's valuable. That's valuable, public relations stuff. It is an award to a young man, work really hard to get, it's very meaningful to people. There's value to the community who pays us to do this job, to do those sorts of things. There's a lot of administrative things which we make decisions on. I never sign it in paper. It's just something that comes through here and, you know, I have to vote no for somebody to retire or yes for somebody to retire? We don't need to do that. So, I think we can refine and change our agendas to contain the meat and focus on the meat and get through those, you know, focus on the things that we, the highest value that we bring to the table is our judgment, being able to debate, discuss, argue, fight, whatever you wanna call it, to make the best decisions for the county. Let's get the meat on here. Some of the meaningful stuff, like the Boy Scout stuff or whatever resolutions, which are meaningful to people and that's something we oughta be doing. And then the other administrative stuff, which really accomplishes no specific thing. We can meet the requirements of the law and still get that stuff done. We can give Dave the authorization to approve those things, review those approvals to make sure that we all have our input on that. I think we can improve our work sessions and the timing of the work sessions with those. In addition to that, and the last thing, is there are things that we are, there are things that just slip through the cracks. We are not being good as an organization at setting goals and accomplishing things that we've talked about and agreed to as common objectives. We've never had a meeting, a work session like this, to talk about common objectives. And I'll bring up one very specific example, which I'm already working toward right now, and Dave knows about this, and that is consolidation of county offices. We need to, I think, and I'm gonna suggest a work session, and maybe we can create regularly established work sessions to talk about, these other counties do this, in which we establish, come together, fight, do whatever we gotta do, to agree on a common set of objectives and goals for a year. Dave's going through a departmental objectives right now, and we're really not involved with that too much. We have oversight or we have some insight onto it, but we're not really involved with that. I'm not good with that. We need to be more involved with some departments. And some are pretty, you know, they are almost on automatic pilot. We trust the people, we hired good people, they're doing a good job. We don't need to be involved too much. Other areas, I'm not as happy with. And I'd like to see some changes, but we need to talk about that. It's not my way, it's not Blake's way, it's not Ralph's way. It's the board's way. And we need to have whatever fight, so Joe could be in the room and he can document this and put it in the paper, and the public gets to weigh in. There are some things I think we need to come to consensus on because you accomplish more if you establish a set of goals. That's a proven fact. And so, we get some common goals on the table and say, okay, this is what we wanna accomplish? Let's accomplish these things. Let's agree that together as a board, we're gonna focus on these things. Or at least, two of the board is gonna focus on these things, however directions is gonna go. But that's gonna require us to come together in a public session because we can't do that behind closed doors. And so, I'm gonna suggest maybe a series of work sessions in which we can come together and create some common goals and objectives, aside from cleaning up our administrative process to make it more effective. And so, that's my two cents word. I don't see any problem with our current one-day thing other than we need to solve the problem of when you get a holiday in there that creates a wrinkle. Because I don't think our work sessions, even when we have a long work session, I don't think that they're all that lengthy. Yeah, a few hours, so what? That's what we're paid to be here for.
Can I comment on the timing or the start time of the meeting? Just to throw it out there. What I've heard from all the commissioners, there's valid points being made on both sides. There's a good reason to start the meeting earlier because it does free up the day for everyone. There's arguments for pushing it back a little bit because we do have a little chaos sometimes we have to deal with. The one thing I wanted to let the board know about that's gonna affect us this year is...
Dave, we saw him be gone.
Mrs. Blair is going to be on maternity leave.
I vote no.
So does Lori. Trust me.
And we have, and we've...
Can we do birthing in here?
We've had the good fortune to bring onboard Lori Zampino. And she's been terrific in everything I've observed her do. The only issue we have is she has some other commitments where she can't be here before about nine-thirty in the morning. So, a ten o'clock start time would allow her to have the prep work done the day before, come in here, have a half hour to set things up. And that's just because of the unique circumstances this year with Christie being off for a while. So that's the only thing I wanted to make sure you're all aware of as you all kinda weigh how you wanna adopt the schedule. That having the start time back at ten for this year for that purpose would be an advantage. But, you know, that may be outweighed by other factors.
Exactly. I'm completely neutral on the time. I couldn't care less. Nine o'clock works for me, ten o'clock works for me, eleven o'clock works for me, Wednesday works for me, Tuesday works for me, whatever...
The only issue with Wednesday, just throwing it out there, is part of the reason, I think historically, why do commissioners have meetings on Tuesdays? The timing of the auditor's processing of the financials that you approve. It just works for it. If you approve them on a Tuesday morning meeting, then they're able to be sent up to the auditor for further processing and checks are cut later in the week on their schedule. If you move the meeting back on a regular basis to Wednesday, we would just have to talk with the auditors about whether that would represent a challenge or maybe would advances in technology? Maybe it would. That's just one of those things we need to talk to the auditor about.
And one thing to add about that too is when we do move, like, when there is a holiday on Monday, you have canceled the meeting on Tuesday, or whether that meeting is held or not historically, the financials are not processed that Tuesday due to the holiday and timing. They're processed by Dave usually on Thursday. And then, that is, there's a requirement that those departments that have to have those financials in, they have to shift their financial deadlines with the auditor's office. And so, there's notification that goes out giving them, hey, you have to change your deadline date to this date by this time for them to be received in the auditor's office, to be reviewed in order before they even get put on the financials, before they're approved on Thursday. And then that process becomes crazy Thursday afternoon and Friday.
The thing that I, it ceases to amaze me here is that there's three of us here and we're willing or prepared to suggest that all the other departments, the rest of the county, all the other elected officials, have to revamp their entire work schedules because we can't start our meeting an hour later and that hour affords our staff more time, our staff, to ensure that all the necessary paperwork is done. They're not rushing down here at the very last minute. I mean, I've sat here where Christie is the second to the last person in the room and she's got the agenda. And it just seems that that creates a certain amount of chaos and tension that I don't think we require that. I do have a question for Skip. When you started, Skip, you said, I thought, if you're not on this board, you're gonna attend the meetings anyway. And I thought you said Development Board. It was at the beginning, and that's what I'm trying to, I'm going through here and I'm trying to figure out which board were you talking about?
Are you talking about like the Community Development Boards, like the CIC, the Fair Housing?
The, no, no, well, it's the Department of Development. And I don't remember saying it, I might have. I get a little blusterous when I...
Well, no, I may have heard it wrong.
It would be the, if there was one, it would be the board you sit on that does the review, like, we approve this one, the long review.
The revolving role.
And so, my intent, I didn't realize how much time I was gonna be spending on a lot of these boards as it currently sits. I mean, I've attended four waste management meetings in the last month to talk about the policy having to do with various things there. And by the way, an improvement for this county, which we're working on right now to set up a waste management. So, a lot of these committees consume an enormous amount of time if you put your heart into it. And I tend to wanna do that. But I would like to spend more time, whether or not I can follow through based on timing and stuff with the Department of Development because that is one of the hot-button things for me is to understand better what we're doing in the county relative to handing out the money we're handing out to organizations or companies.
And so, the other question I have is Christie used, mentioned something to Skip. He took the floor, about director's meetings. Now, I used to attend the director's meetings pretty regularly. Because of the open meetings law, more than one commissioner can attend the director's meeting. But you better be real careful of the discussion that takes place there because some antagonist or critic will accuse us of violating the meeting law. So, when Skip started going to those, I stopped going to them. But you mentioned to him about what the directors have said in director's meetings about the schedule and so on and so forth. Is that not correct?
I did. And that was because, I actually used to go to the director's meetings more regularly and I had only been to two this year. And the one that I did attend, I went specifically because we were having a lot of trouble with the departments not getting their paperwork in a week ahead of time. The requirement has been, since before I got here, that their paperwork procession is in a week prior to the requested date of session so that it can get in our office, be logged, be processed and sent to you, for review, so that if there's any questions that come up or if you have any issues with any of the documentation, that gives you time to review it, get your questions answered or if things have to be changed or corrected within the department. Because a lot of times when that paperwork comes to me, I catch that it's missing a signature, it's missing Laura's signature, it's missing the auditor's stamp, depending on what it is. And I have to kick it back sometimes to that department for those items to be corrected and then come back to me. In addition to that, I went to that meeting specifically because they were not getting those items to us in a reasonable time. And I get the, well, we were off on Monday, can we get an extra day? I'm like, no, you should've planned ahead of time, you knew the holiday was coming. It's often hard sometimes to juggle making sure that I get session paperwork from today ready to go and then tomorrow I have to get the seventh agenda done and out to you guys so you can have your documentation to work on minutes to get next week prepped and that kinda stuff. And if I'm constantly having multiple departments go, can I get this on? Can I get this on? Then it becomes a question to all of you and to Dave, hey, are you okay with this? We're talking about documentation and changing the agenda. We got paperwork from Community Development that we approved today, yesterday afternoon at three-thirty-five, for three more days on a Saturday note. And I didn't see that paperwork until eight o'clock this morning when I walked through the door because I had a doctor's appointment yesterday afternoon. And none of you actually saw it until you signed it today.
So, and let me address, because Christie made a comment about attending the director's meetings. And there were two, if I can summarize them, two areas that they would like to have seen changed. And let me make a statement here because I would support both of these two guys in the statement, I think, what I hear. And that is a lack of planning does not constitute an emergency on our part. And I will give Christie a huge kudo because if there's anybody that's at the core, making sure that this whole office runs smoothly, it's Christie. Because she is covering everybody's butts and she does it quietly, she does it without...
Not always quietly.
Yeah.
Sometimes I just close the door and go, shh.
Sometimes I can hear through the wall. And I hear things thrown up against the wall. But that said, there are, and she is making people in our policy, by the way, the nine o'clock meeting policy makes people better because it forces them to plan better. Now, there are some departments that do better than others. But there are, there were two things that I heard relative to the departments. And they're okay, they're living with what we created. The two things were, look, we do have this situation with holidays and sometimes we miss that deadline. I mean, we're all human beings, we all screwed up. You know, I try to read the stuff that Christie sends me as quickly as she gets it to me. Over the holiday season with the nonsense that was going on in my personal life, I just didn't get to it until a couple of days ago.
Right.
And so, you know, traveling, being in an airplane, my computer crashed, I got a virus on my computer which drove me crazy. So, all of that said, we're all human beings and there needs to be a little bit of margin. But there are improvements we need to make. And there always are improvements you need to make. As a business, as an organization, whatever, there's always improvements. But one of those is the whole holiday schedule thing. And if they miss a deadline, if they screw up, and sometimes we do, they do, then there needs to be a safety valve to help out there possibly. Oh, they're gonna have to wait three weeks. And maybe that creates a problem because of the whatever grant timing or whatever the case has to be. The other thing was, that whole administrative process that we have to put through this organization on the stuff that we don't really need to weigh in on. If we could fix those two things, our departments would be a lot happier. That's what I heard them say. So, that's the reason that I brought it up. I didn't lay it on them when I brought it up. It was just a takeaway for me to bring up. But cleaning up the administrative process so that the meat is on our agenda and we're focused on the meat with a little friendly banter in between. And then getting the administrative stuff off there, you know?
So, it sounds to me that Monday morning at nine AM would probably work better than Tuesday at nine. So, we would have a deadline of Friday. Because I think what we're doing is we are creating a Monday morning rush of last minute. Friday is the day that that's finalized, and Monday is the day of the meeting.
The only problem you're gonna run into is that the majority of your holidays fall on Monday.
Okay, and also you do them on Tuesday.
So, the thought process was... So, the, the thought process was if you do decide to cancel the meeting on Tuesday, the week that the holiday would fall, instead of holding, instead of canceling your meeting altogether, that you would hold a meeting on Thursday that week instead of canceling it completely because.
You'd have a meeting every week.
So that you would have, still have a meeting.
I'm a little bit lost, because the concern was is the, and I guess we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth in this. The concern was the auditor, that he can't get his stuff done, but now all of a sudden we're okay to do a Thursday meeting. So.
Well, we process financials on Thursday.
So what I, what I, what I'm hearing is this, is we officially would schedule, on all these Mondays, we would officially schedule our meeting on Tuesday. And on, on all the other weeks, we officially schedule our meeting on Monday. And Friday is your day. And that way the auditor is not griping that he doesn't have the time to get stuff done. Monday morning at nine AM, we start our week, we start our meeting, and it's pretty much it. You're not getting bum rushed with all these people that are trying to come up to you last minute on Monday to try to make Tuesday's meeting. And we have it officially set up so that if it's a, if it's a, if it's a meeting on a, if, if there's a holiday on a Monday, they're not going to be able to tell you that, oh, because of the holiday I couldn't do this and now I need to do. Well, here's the deal. You have Friday, Friday is the day, everybody understands that going forward, this is what it needs to be. Monday morning, we're having our meeting, if it's a holiday, Tuesday morning, but that Friday is the same as it always is. There would be one situation here, which is this Friday, the November 11th for Veterans Day and, and New Year's Day, which is the, the first of January, it falls on a Friday for this month, and then that, they're all Mondays. And I think that if you look at this, it's, it's a simple fix, I think we're.
It's a simple fix.
You know, I think.
Leave it, it'll go back to the way it was, that's the simple fix. But apparently because of whatever ego or personal business or whatever among the three of us, we want everybody else in the county to change. We want all other departments, and by departments, I don't mean just the eleven veteran in our hiring authority. I mean, all the elected officials to change their schedule so that it can comply with the three of us.
I don't think that that's true.
Well, I think it's what you're suggesting.
I don't think that's true, I think that it comes down to the point that you have to set guidelines. You, you can't be everything to everybody, okay? So you can't, you can't be everything to everybody. So it gets to the point where you have to set policies, you know? This is, this is a, this is the policy, you have to have it in by Friday. I mean, I, I, I'm, to be quite honest with you, and I don't really know what, where you're going with this, if it's politically driven or whatever. At the end of the day, it's like this, I really, I, I really couldn't care less if we do a meeting at ten. I think that it's more efficient for the county operation to do a meeting at nine AM. It's not about me personally, it's about business. And as far as, 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 you know, what do we do? Do we basically, if, if we, if we, if we, if we don't take a leadership role, then you're taking a backseat to everything else. And it comes down to the point that you've got to make a policy to be able to move forward, to be able to organize something systematically to make it work so everybody knows where we're at.
Let, let me weigh in on this real quick, because I, I don't necessarily see your argument, Blake. The Tuesday, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, it's worked. It's worked for, I don't know, a decade before, as I was sitting in the audience at ten o'clock. We shifted it one hour, that didn't change anybody's life, other than they had to get a little quicker in getting it in. But generally people's, you know, Murphy's Law takes over, they wait until the midnight hour to get the paperwork done, they send it over, but that's on them. We, we can't, as Ralph said, be concerned too much with people who wait to the last minute. Now, there are last minute things that happen, and that's understandable, and we need to react to those. And either screwed up and, and, and put the wrong company down. Okay, you mean, stuff happens, and so we react to that and we accommodate it the best that we can. I don't know what it would mean to shift to Monday, I don't really care the day. Only to the extent that it shouldn't create bigger problems for us and/or people who are submitting things into the system. If we set a deadline of Friday versus Monday, what is the impact of that? I don't know the answer to that question. Maybe you two know the answer to that and/or we need to reach out and ask. If Monday would give people the motivation to get it in by Friday, they'd have all week up until Friday to get it in. And then Monday morning, we show up and conduct the meeting, would that make it better or worse? I don't know the answer to that question.
I'm shaking my head because the bottom line is, is it's not going to matter what day that you give them as a deadline to get it in. If it's Tuesday at noon for the following Tuesday, or if you tell them it's Friday at noon for the following Friday, they're still going to call and beg and ask to get things on because they didn't get it here. A lot of the things that I do hear is, well, I didn't get it back from the prosecutor's office, I didn't get it back from the prosecutor's office, or it's at the prosecutor's office. So I know that a lot of them.
You're the common denominator there.
The, the motivation for me doing this is because I do spend a lot of time here. And I have spent a lot of time here for the last two years, two plus years. And I see what's going on, I observe. Skip does spend a lot of time there since he's been elected. A lot of it is on the phone with someone. I don't know what that's about, don't care. I spend a lot of time going from one office to the other, talking to people, what's this mean, how come we're doing that? Asking questions about various things. And over the time, I know, and, and they all work for us. So by working for us, some at our pleasure, they're between a rock and a hard place with regard to coming out against me or you or Ralph or whoever because their jobs, their livelihood, that they feel are, right or wrong, they feel are in jeopardy. I'm telling you that in the last two years, the change that was made, I agreed to the first change. You check the, the record, I voted against, a year ago, I voted against the second change.
The second change being the nine o'clock in the morning?
The nine o'clock in the morning and, and doing away with the other Thursday meeting. We used to have a, a Thursday morning meeting. First year, when it first came on, it was Tuesday morning, Thursday morning, ten o'clock in the morning. The only exception being like Thanksgiving or some, something to do with a holiday where it conflicted. You know, Christmas is on Tuesday, well, you're not going to have that meeting that day. Then, in the start of 2014, it was suggested, and I know I voted for it, that we go to Tuesday morning meetings that were at ten o'clock. And one Thursday morning meeting, the second Thursday of the month, and the fourth Thursday of the month would be an evening meeting at six thirty. And I agreed with, with that. I think Mary may have, I think that might have been unanimous, but I don't want it, I, I don't want to say with certainty. Last year, you were here, Skip, for the organizational meeting. And when it was suggested to move them to, to eliminate that second Thursday, you know, the second week, Thursday of the month, the second Thursday would be the first Thursday meeting. To eliminate that one and move the other meetings to nine in the morning, I voted against that because I'd already been sitting here for a year under the old system, watching, watching the staff pull their hair out. Trying to get things done at the last minute. Personally, I don't care if we hold them Sunday at noon. I don't care when, I don't care if we hold them Wednesday night at midnight, it doesn't matter to me. My concern is having our staff non-phraseled, working without undue pressure. That's caused in part because we, we have a schedule that we think works and it doesn't work. I know it doesn't work because I'm here. The, the end result is insignificant to, to me. Like I said, I can make anyone, pick a time, I'll be here. But the staff is, and yeah, they work for a living and we pay them. So they can come in anytime we want, that's a bad attitude to have.
Well, let me, let me comment on that real quick. First of all, you will never not have a phrasal staff here, that's the nature of the business. You will always have the auditor and/or Laura or whoever, the system is wired to be inefficient. This staff is always going, that's the life that they live. Since I started attending these meetings eight years ago or seven years ago or however long it was, to today, no matter what meeting schedule we had, Christie has always been running around in the back, somebody's just dropped off a piece of paperwork, she's had to live with this. This has been her life for eight years. So you, we will never not, can we reduce that? I think we can. We can reduce it by taking some of the administrative nonsense out of here we don't need in here, which is, just garbage is up the agenda. Focus on the meet a little bit, have some workstations for the three of us can come on common ground on a few goals and objectives. And then, and pick a date. Tuesday morning seems to be working to me, I've watched it for a year now. And I don't see, yeah, we have little moments where we've got an issue here and there. But it seems to be working, unless I hear something from the people who are living with this, and by the way, we live with this too. But if, unless I hear something significant, I'd say leave it the way it is. Now, I would like to get another work session in there, the Thursday night sessions, I think we can put more agenda items in those. We focused on a lot of informational meetings. I've never seen a meeting that was just a gripe session. I have seen informational meetings that resulted in people griping. And okay, that's part of the intent in putting the information out there so we give people the opportunity to get their feelings out there and all that kind of stuff. But I'm not seeing this, you know, we're, we're bantering, we spent a lot of much time here.
Too much.
You know, two hours now or an hour, bantering around meeting schedule. And, and I don't think we get that big of an issue. I mean, Tuesday morning seems to work, I don't have any problem moving it to Monday if we can justify it and, and, you know, we're not going to do it today anyway. If we come up with, you know, reach out to the other departments and say, hey, look, do you guys care if we move it to Monday? We'll do it Monday morning, do you care if we move it to Wednesday? You guys do a little homework, we'll put the, this back on the, on our staff's back and say, okay, you pick a date. And, and then you tell us, do we need another meeting in there? And given the holiday schedules and the fact that we could come into some crises, is there a tweak to the holiday schedule, meeting schedule that we need to make in order to avoid those? And I think we're, we can be done.
I was looking at that, the, the majority of the meetings are the holidays, fall either the second or the third Monday of the month.
Right.
But in the way that the, the rest of the calendar falls, it looks like if you were to schedule like the third Thursday, if you were to cancel one of those meetings, then you have another option in the month that would catch the meeting that you would cancel.
Right.
If you choose to.
So could we move past this schedule thing then, it's, it's been over, over six, you know, an hour and five minutes? And what else, what is, what's the next item on your agenda that we need to cover here?
Well, we're talking about holiday schedules, meaning that like if you wanted to set the schedule for the whole year, so like if you, if the holiday fell on a Monday, if you wanted to cancel that Tuesday meeting, then you would set like, that's why I've made a suggestion of like setting up the third Thursday of the month for a meeting. That way, if you did cancel those meetings for the year, then you have that Thursday, that third Thursday in the middle of the month to hold that meeting or to catch the ones that you'd set. And if you wanted to go ahead and set the schedule for the whole year at that point regarding Thanksgiving, Christmas, and whatnot.
Yeah, and we could set a safety valve meeting and cancel it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we could establish a meeting that's surrounding those holidays. And if we find out that we don't really need it because there's no issues cropping up or whatever, we can cancel the meeting, no harm, no foul.
Yeah, right.
Well, historically, I thought the purpose for giving a day off around the holiday had to do with whether the holiday was one day away from a weekend. In other words, you got Thanksgiving off and you give them Friday off because when they come in Friday, there's no, there's very little work that's going to get done because the next day's Saturday. So they, they don't really, historically, and I've worked a few places, that not a lot of work gets done. Christmas or New Year's falls on a Tuesday.
Next year it's on Monday.
Well, on a Monday, it's not an issue, you got Saturday and Sunday off, then you got Monday. Then you come to work on Tuesday. But it's the time, it's when the holiday falls where there's a workday that's trapped between a Tuesday or Thursday holiday. And the fact that, yes, they can come in, but the reality is they're probably not going to get a whole hell of a lot done. It's just, I've seen it in factory work, I've seen it in office work, I've seen it in any number of places over my many years that, that I've been involved with. To, to give the staff or the county or whatever that extra day after a holiday is, unless, unless the day after that is Friday, I don't think it, it's necessary.
Yeah, so the only one next year that you would be looking at would be the day of the Thanksgiving because Christmas and New Year's Day fall on Monday. Because they fall on the weekend, so they're served on Monday.
Right.
So.
And I, I guess my only thing is, is I got a little bit of an issue with that, is, is that if that's the case, then why don't we just give them that day off too? If, if, if there's that big of a problem and then.
What day off?
If you're saying there's nothing getting done, I'm a little bit concerned because if that's, if, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that there's a holiday and then, so if the holiday's on Monday, are you saying that they're not working on Friday but they're here?
No.
So.
I'm saying that if there's a holiday on Monday, they were off Saturday and Sunday, and then Monday was the holiday, they come to work on Tuesday.
All right.
If the holiday was on Tuesday, they're home on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
Monday they come to work, they're less than productive, then they go to work on Tuesday, and then it, it just.
They go to work on Tuesday?
No, they come, they come in on, they, they're on holiday on Tuesday, they come in on Wednesday, finish out the rest of the week. Unless the day that we're giving them off is a day that falls between a holiday and the weekend, on either end of the weekend.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary.
But I mean, how we, what are we basing this, this, this statement that they're less productive, I'm, I'm having a difficult.
Personal experience. Okay? Hey, I, I, I don't know that you ever worked in a.
Are you struggling with that?
Hmm?
Are you struggling with that?
Yeah, I'm, I understand what Blake is trying to say, I don't see it in the staff, so.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, what staff? Our staff?
Yeah.
But when we do this, we give everybody's staff off that day. In our eleven hiring authority. But historically, the rest of the county follows our lead. Historically, no, we don't give them, we don't give the prosecutor's office a day off. But they historically, here you go with that historically again you don't like. It's been the case that most of the other agencies, except for twenty-four operation and emergency services, give the same work schedule that we adopt at this table.
I, I, I'm not disputing that, but I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I missed, I missed the point, can you explain?
I'm, I'm.
Why would we?
I think what Blake was trying to say.
So if, so are you basically saying there's people coming to work that are not doing their job? And that, that are being paid to do their job and not doing their job? Because that's kind of what I'm hearing. And, and I, and I got an issue with that because if you're saying that they're non-productive leading up to a holiday, I, and, and we're, are we paying these people for that day? Or is this something that we're, or is this, you know, something of an, I guess this is alarming to me because if there's, if there's some form of abuse that you know of and I, and this is news to me, then I think we need to discuss this.
Why, if we had a Tuesday holiday, why we have a Tuesday holiday after the weekend? Would you give them Monday off?
We have, we're Thanksgiving Day, we have.
That's a Thursday holiday.
Friday off.
And you historically have given us Friday off.
Right. And historically, we have done that, whether that was a good decision historically or a bad decision.
Do we give a day off for Good Friday?
No.
I don't believe we do.
I think the only, what happens if Veterans Day happened on a Tuesday? Because Veterans Day, the one holiday that you always celebrate on the 11th of November.
I guess I, I guess we're getting off the, my question is, this. I guess I, I guess we're getting off the, my question is this no production or slow production or I, 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 what was the term used?
They're not as productive.
So, but that's concerning because are we not, are, are we paying them that day or are we not paying them that day?
It's a paid day off.
It's a paid day off in between those days, so then.
I think that's what, what, what I think Ralph's concern is, is if, if we're saying for the record that if we have somebody working on a day between a weekend and a holiday and we have them come in, they're not really gonna do that much work. And, and that's concerning and I agree that would be concerning. I don't think that's the case in anything that I'm familiar with. Usually, days like that.
And that's what I wanted to clarify because it sounded to me that he knew something that, is if there's something that you know that based on your previous experience or something. I don't know exactly what you're, what you mean by that. I can tell you this is that, I mean, if we're paying somebody for, for, for a day's pay, then I would expect that they're working. But if there's a problem, we need to address this.
I won't dispute that at all.
Okay, so.
But I'm saying you're, you're setting up an environment for that to happen.
But, but how is this? I, 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 cause I'm, I'm struggling with this because you said that there's history.
No doubt you're struggling with it, but what I'm trying to say is that why do we give them the day off after Thanksgiving?
I think that that has been something that since I've been a commissioner here for, for, for the, for the three years that I've been here and for the, for the time that I came in when Tracy and Mary were, were here as commissioners, that they did it then too. And it's always been something that's been a, been a standard practice. If, if that, if you see that there's a problem and you don't wanna do that.
I'm all for it. I, I'd probably move to give those days off. I'm telling you that if it's on a day that's.
So give me an example of, of one of the days that we paid somebody to be here and they did not work.
July fourth is on a Tuesday. Do we give them July third off?
I don't know.
No, I, good example, July fourth fell on a Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
And we, you, the board chose to give us Friday off as a paid day off because the holiday fell on Thursday. You gave us Friday off that year.
Yeah.
And we had a long week out.
July fourth and Veterans Day would be two red cards on that day.
There was one department that chose not to close, another elected official chose to stay open. And that meant that our maintenance department then under your hiring authority worked.
So let me ask you a question. So that's the day that we're saying that people are not coming in and doing a hundred percent their job? But if they're not here, how are they able to do that? I, I guess I'm, I, I, I need some clarification on this, that they're not doing, given a hundred percent. That's where I'm lost. This is, you said your, your, your future past history or something. They could not do the job that day because they're off. Right?
No, I think what Blake was saying is that like if we would have, you gave us.
If you don't give them the day off.
We had a holiday off on Thursday and we had to come in and work to work on Friday and then you were off Saturday and Sunday. I think what he's saying is that the majority of the people that would come in on Friday may not be as productive that day as they would normally be.
But why?
I don't know. I don't know.
Cause I, I just don't think.
Well, I mean, if it's, they could have the kind of job that requires interaction with other people who are not there. So they're not gonna be as busy. I know in this office, we look at days like that where we're working and hey, we can get stuff done because we're not being interrupted every five minutes. But we can get some meaningful work done, but not everybody has that same environment. Some departments are, are dependent on people coming to them, you know, on real time, things for them to do. And if their, that volume is down, they may not be that, it may not be any laziness on our part, it's just their workload has dropped because they don't have as many customers.
Well, and there's the, the fact that you're working in your job, but the guy next to you took a day off. So when you're trying to do your job and it has to go to the next guy over, he took it, he took a personal day. He took a vacation day. So I'm here and I punched in, I'm gonna punch out, so I'm working. But my productivity is, is not that great because I can't go to the next person. That's just, it's like, I hate to go here, but it's like hunting season. The opening day of hunting season, I don't care what day it is, people don't show up at the plant, they don't come to work. You know, the first day of bowling season, when they open up the bowling leagues, the day after, half the people are sleeping it off.
That's one of the things that I get excited about. Let's get that bowling day out.
I'm just saying.
That's not on this, that's not on this calendar.
Sorry, there was a little white.
Christie, where's that on this calendar?
When you're looking at holidays.
My husband's company changed their holiday schedule.
Can we, can we get back about it? Unless that day is trapped.
Can we get back, I'm gonna get a hammer out here.
If that day is trapped, like a Thursday or a Monday between a Tuesday holiday or a Friday holiday, you give it to them off. If it's, if it's a Monday holiday, you don't give them Tuesday off to get another day off.
I, I think we're off in a ditch a little bit. I, I think it's.
It is, and yeah, it's a, it's a moot point because the only one that you're going to deal with is this.
It's a, it's a man, a management issue and not something for us to be concerned about. We, we ensure that our employees and we have good employees do their jobs. I'm not worried about the others' employees. That's for him to worry about. If he chooses to give them off because we did, that's on him, not on us. If they're not working and our guys are working their butts off on the day that we chose not to give them off, then we're gonna call the auditor on it. Say, you know, you guys aren't working. But, and I don't think that's a problem. So we make the best decisions we can based on, you know, if we wanna be good to our employees, we make it for a lot of reasons. It motivates people, it recreates energy in people sometimes when you give them an extra day off. We do that for a lot of good management reasons and so sometimes we do that.
You guys did that this year as a prime example.
I don't, I don't think we need to, we need, they'll need to go over and over this. It is human nature sometimes, you know, they come into the office and they can't get ahold of somebody. Depending on their job, they may or may not be as productive, it may not be their fault that day just because, you know, everybody else is off. Um, and we're gonna make the best decisions we can for our employees in those holiday seasons. And I think there's nobody at this table that wouldn't agree with that. So where we announce.
Your board appointments for commissioners, that is going to change based on, some of them are set, they're required by, as the president to be in the primary. It would depend on who you would want to set as your alternate or some of the other boards that have rotated in the past. Like ADP Board, Board of Provision. All three of you sit on the sheer number of large enough partners, but I don't even think we've gone to any meetings.
No, we actually, we actually.
I don't think we pay dues to this. We're not even a member.
We take that off of there.
Um, community corrections, you have to understand some of these boards are not necessarily our boards, you just sit on them. Like, um, the community corrections planning is a prime example. It's common, it's a board that's set by common pleas and they schedule meetings, you just have to attend. Courthouse Security is another example, Family First, um, Farming Preservation Committee. I, it says two commissioners, I don't think they've gone to a meeting in two years. So we'll probably take that.
I don't know if they even have, if they ever had a meeting.
Um, Financial Review and Report Committee, I know you are going to that meeting that's scheduled by the auditor's office. You have the calendar for this week. Um, as president, you are the primary for that. Agricultural Society, all three of you sit on. I'm looking at the bottom list, we're from the last year's list. Jitter Growth Partnership, we took off because we don't belong.
Not members.
We're not members. Solid Waste Policy is, is required to be, the president is primary, but all three of you sit on the Board of Directors. So when those meetings are scheduled, it's based on availability between you and Trumbull County. You, we coordinate it and, and you go.
Well, that's the policy.
Yes, well, no, Board of Directors.
The Board of Directors is.
Policy is, is required to be president.
And the Board of Directors, we just made him the vice president and the guy, and that alternates year to year. I was president this year. Now there's a guy from Trumbull that's president and Ralph's the vice president.
Right. But that is set within that own board.
Yeah, the six of us set that, okay, that's.
Um, Microfilm Board, Records Commission, and President is primary.
President of the Chairman of the Records Commission.
Yes. You have to decide who sits Stormwater Task Force, I don't think there's been a meeting in the last couple of years we could probably put that one off too. Now, the Tax and Senate Review Board and CRA or Investment, all three of you sit on that. But you could either appoint somebody to be in that seat for you. Um, last year you chose to each appoint an alternate and I don't know that any of you ever even attended a meeting. Does it be the Health Board? And Wetland Mitigation Bank Subcommittee, I don't think we've had a meeting in the last two years. So we can clean some of that up. But again, depending on who we decide to be president and vice president, would then set some of these as the primary alternate. Um, and then the rest, we would, you know, we would have to decide almost you.
Cool.
For those more of us. And then, let's see here, you already talked about staff appointments. Ralph, Ralph feels that aside from making the change to Jerry, that everything stays the same. Um, board appointments by the commissioners.
You're gonna change to what, did you?
To Jerry. I had it on there, it was still on there as Doug, so it's just Jerry.
Oh, 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 oh.
Just the last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, board appointments by the commissioners. There's a shortlist of boards that you have to appoint people to that the recommendations usually come from another department. Um, and then you can take those at under review and then make your decision. One of them is from DBS and that's the Terrorism Mitigation of Planning. Those, that has come in from Dale and those are basically set by one being like the sheriff and one being the, you know, fire law enforcement and, and that kind of stuff. And that list has come in already for Dale, so you'll be getting that. Um, I have not seen the one from Fair Housing Commission. There's five appointments that have to be set this year for a two-year term. Those usually come from Community Development, I have not seen them yet. Family Services Planning, there's, it's an annual appointment.
Let me stop you right there on that one because I have a comment on that. And I made this comment to Dave and Christie yesterday. And there are some of these boards that we appoint to, that we get recommendations and we rubber stamp those. There are certain ones that I'm not comfortable rubber stamping any longer. One of those happens to be the Planning Commission and the other happens to be this Fair Housing Board. Knowing where HUD is going with this, I'm gonna look at every one of those members that we're gonna be appointing to the, that we know who are appointing to the, to these folks and what their, their values and beliefs are.
A suggestion for you. You may wanna look at the January sixth Commissioners Meeting Paper or listen to it. I think it's January sixth of twenty fifteen. And listen to your commentary.
We do. Watching movies during that time?
Uh, it's just a suggestion, you don't.
Yeah, I'm gonna like.
You're not required to do that, I mean.
January sixth, twenty fifteen?
I believe it's Jan-, it's the first, it's the first meeting in January, Ralph was still the president. And, uh.
And I was green behind the ears, newbie.
Well, no, you, you'd sat here for six or seven years in the, in the audience, plus you had been appointed for four or five months. So it's just, it's just something that for your own benefit, I'm suggesting.
I'll go look at it. I, I would, I'd love to watch those. There's nothing on TV these days.
Well, cheaper than Netflix. Just, you know, get a big bowl of popcorn and some Nodos and, uh, sit, sit down and watch.
Just so you are aware too, the letter that I always send out to the departments for those that have appointments that need to be made, they are given deadlines of when that they are supposed to be received by. And today is the date for the reorder meeting, so they'll give you two weeks for review. And that they are supposed to have those applicants fill out an application for a committee appointment and through the resume if applicable for review of qualifications and a turn, return along with attendance records of current members. And I also ask for a meeting schedule for the year and through dates and location, current member roster, members terms of service length and who appoints and admission statement. So I, I ask for these things every year, I don't always get them.
The, the deadline is today.
Today is the deadline.
How many have you gotten so far?
I have, um, Job and Family Services and I have the one from DBS.
So how many are missing?
Um, you're missing Fair Housing. You're missing the Local Revolving Loan Fund. You're missing your revolving loan fund. Um, NACOG appointments is on here, but they aren't done until mid-year and I'm still waiting to hear back from Craig Cernick.
Yeah, the NACOG is, uh.
The Workforce Development.
The state got that all followed up and then they backed out of it. So their, their, uh, appointments are, I, I have it on my desk, but they're confusing. Because you gotta have six that are from like the business sector. They have a, a, a set criteria.
They have requirements.
They have a requirement. Uh, there's very few on there that are, uh, like at will, you know, just anybody off the street. They all have some, need to have some background.
So on my list, Fair Housing, Local Revolving Loan Fund and Revolving Loan Fund are the ones that I currently do not have. And overall, Community Development Boards. The Planning Commission was due before the end of the year. I did receive their request and along with their applications or information that was requested, um, that was pulled this morning. We have since then received, um, the, an application that came in via email from Chuck Grasser. We have one from Andy Miller Jr. We have one from Chester Miller and we also have one from Tom Jones. Those are the other applications that have come in the last couple of days.
Uh, these are applications.
These are, these are like informational.
Submissions, they didn't fill out the application.
This did not come from Planning Commission, they came to our office as, um, as a request to be on the planning board.
I don't wanna, I have a question or comment. There's two Millers. And I know there's a.
Well, there are two.
Yeah, I know, all right. I know there's, I know there's a push from, uh, the other two commissioners to try to get more Amish involved in government. Which I, I, I completely agree with that. The folks that have been here for many years that I've talked to said that's not new. They've tried to do it in the past. But when you appoint someone, an Amish person to those boards, you gotta remember how are they gonna get to and from the meetings? Cause their meetings are at seven o'clock at night or whatever, they're in the evening. You're appointing someone from the Parkman, Middlefield, Huntsburg area. They have to get here or not. They can, they can hold the seat on there. But the problem with a lot of those boards is they don't have enough people to, to get a forum. It's just something to think about unless they have.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Let me address that because these two individuals, both of whom I talked to.
Okay.
As Blake said, um, I, I reached out to the Amish community, not to just two, but to a number of people, the folks that I know. And I put the word out, we're looking for somebody to be on the Planning Commission to represent your community. And so the word is going out there and we'll see how many responses we get. Both of these guys I know. Um, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up for this reason. Andy Miller owns a pallet company. He's not the Andy Miller that owns the truck farm over on Bungesburg Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, he is a financially stable guy who's got his own transportation, not an issue. He sits on some other boards, he knows what he's getting into and so he's a, knows what that's about. Chester also, um, sits on two other boards. He sits on the Family First Council and he sits on, um, what was the other one? He sits on another board in the county already. And he had suggested, and this is gonna be out of the box a little bit here, and we'll have to talk about this. On one of the boards, I think it's the Family First Council, they actually gave him a twenty-five dollar stipend to transportation. So as a board.
Boy, I'm on that board, I'm unaware of that and I've never seen an Amishman at a meeting.
Well, he attends the meetings, I can guarantee you.
He's listed as being a, a member on the, on the Family First Council.
You must stress it.
No, not Family First.
No.
Family Services.
Okay, 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 all right, never mind.
Okay, sorry.
I was gonna say Family First.
I remember him, maybe he came to one, cause I'm on that. Yeah, well, he attends, he tells me he attends the meetings.
The list that I got from, um, Becky because it would include there, it should be in my office.
Yeah, the attendance record is important if they're on there.
That's a good point and I'm, I'm good with that. We need to have some people show up. And, and I, I know a number of Amish folks I have reached out to and I would ask everybody who knows an Amish guy. Their impact is as much as anybody, they ought to be in the Planning Commission.
I, I don't disagree at all, it's just that there's this other aspect of it with just transportation, yeah.
What I'm gonna suggest is, because there is a precedent in some other councils, is that they provide a stipend to the Amish guy to get him a taxi to come out to those meetings. And so we have to determine if it is at enough value, and we're not talking very much money here, twenty-five bucks a meeting and it's once a month or whatever the Planning Commission happens to be. And so it might be worth it to, to get the Amish community engaged in the process here in the county to provide a stipend, to offset that. I don't know if it's physically, I mean, if it's legally doable.
Yeah, I was gonna be.
Worked it or whatever, but it, it is something to bring up and talk about, floated by Laura, floated by whoever, set a budget up for that. Or give them a, you know, an expense report to fill out or something, I don't know. I don't know how. I don't know how it'd be worked out, but it's something to talk about. I think it's a, that, enough value to get the Amish community engaged in the county process. With the Buggy Lane effort that's going on, with, you know, the Planning Commission that impacts all of them, and they've all, a lot of them have called me to, to express some concern over things that are happening in their communities and asking for advice and so forth. I, I think it'd be valuable to get them engaged and to actually provide that transportation stipend if we can work it out, so I'm just throwing that out there.
So the only, only one that is not on here would be LEPC, which is done every two years, and that'll come up in August. So those are, those are your outside board appointments that we have, there isn't a lot for this year, because most of them are longer terms than a year. The only one that I want to note is the Aging Advisory Board. While you do not appoint members to the Aging Advisory Board, because it's done now through their nominating committee, they did not have a quorum at their last meeting in December, so they will not have a meeting again until the third week in February, and while each of you are allowed to sit on that board yourself, or appoint a member to sit on your behalf, I know you said Denver left, so she's asking if you could just wait until we, till February, till after she's had her meeting to do your appointment.
Okay.
That was-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm fine with it.
So that's all I have for board appointments by all of you. Drainage engineer and compensation is whether you want to choose to keep your county engineers or drainage engineer.
Well, he gets right at first refusal.
And the compensation is set by his salary, and there wasn't a slight adjustment by a penny to the bi-weekly rate for next year, and he went down with any.
And I think it makes sense to do that.
What is our population in this county?
It's not quite 95, 90. I think the official's like 93 and change.
Yes, 93 and some hundreds is the, now, I haven't been called the maternity ward to see if anybody's been delivered, Christie's gonna add to that, I, I-
Could you work a little harder?
No, I haven't until last year.
That, that, that-
I already added one two years ago, so.
Population number, to me, that's an approximation, because you-
Because I, because I, I think that we need to look at, I, and I'm not sure what the possibility is, but I, under Ohio Vice Code, I can't remember what the number is, 325 something. We need to look at that, because if that's the case, and we're, if, unless I'm misinterpreting it, I think that we may look, need to look, re, relook and have maybe the prosecutor's office relook at what our salary is.
For-
It's over, has to be over 95,000 as of the last census.
That's changing.
Okay, because according to, what is, so our, so, so our base read is how much?
55.
524.
That is all being in the process of being changed.
If you look into the, if you look into the Ohio Vice Code, I believe that 95,000 and more would just set the 55,000.
Correct.
Below that, we should only be making 47,000.
No, no, it's, it's, you go, you're, you're at the correct rate, because the, believe me.
You guys are getting an increase, because I know that that's been-
At the last, at the last census count-
You won't.
At the last census count.
When you get revised in.
We were in, well-
Well, we were, there was a big expectation we were gonna go over 95,000.
Right.
Which would have been, but, but no, the, the rate is, we're in the big, you're in the, the right band.
I know that.
You would go like 70 or so. Looks like counties.
But, but what I guess, my, my, my question is this, do you have your iPad there that you can just do a, do a, do a search for, for county commissioners in Ohio salary under Google, and should take you to that Law Rider or whatever, to put you under the Ohio Vice Code? Because I think that if, if it's, if it's correct, I think, I, you know, unless there's something that I'm missing or this law is not correct, I just don't want to get into a situation down the road, I was just made aware of this yesterday, but I don't want to get into a situation that if we're, if we're being overcompensated, then we need to pay back the county some dollars.
No, actually, and, and like I said, that there, the paper just stood on my desk.
If you look at this here-
In that coming-
If you go to-
To the compensation.
Yes. So if we go to Ohio.
Table one. Okay, I got, I got CCAO up here, I wanna get to table one, here we go.
Yeah, it's set by, but there's other factors that are included.
325.10.
Here, here, right here.
So.
Yeah, so we're in, you're in the band 55 to 95, so you're being paid 55.
Okay, because, and, and, and maybe, so, so maybe this is not updated, but according to this, and this is just from the, this is from Law Rider-
2001.
2001.
That's why.
But then the next jump would be to 2016. And in 2016, it's still, the breakdown would be 55 to 95.
Be taking you to 58.
But, so, so 55 to 95 here is 47,000.
But that's, that's for 2001.
Okay, because-
Seeing this, and now it'll be, yeah, it's been, it's been stuck at 50, oh, that-
What does that thing say for the year?
55, 524, which is what you're being paid. This is from CCAO. It hasn't changed.
Yeah, it hasn't changed. There's been no increase at all.
Okay, because I just, when I saw this yesterday on this Ohio Vice Code website-
No, but that's 2001, that's what it was.
It shows the 2001 to, to, to 16, then what it would be for 16 and what it would be for 17.
Yeah, or it'll jump to the 58, because that's just a recent change.
You're not getting that much of an increase.
It's some, it's some number, and you get half of it next year and half the year after, if you're elected in.
But that's why I double checked with Christie on the, on the town.
You'll start, you're-
I just, I wanted to make sure that we were, we were above boards at that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. People who are elected this year will get their first pay increase in 2017. There were people in 20-
I've lucked out with that, by the way.
I mean, they, I guarantee you the county auditor, I mean, when Tracy was auditor, you know, that's one of the things they feel responsible for, making sure all the elected officials are paid correctly.
That stuff has been coming in from CCAO, every time it comes in, I forward it to Heidi.
16 grades, it applies to people who were voted in last year.
So is there anything else then, as far as what do we, what else is?
We just have to double check to make sure that Jerry and Frank are okay with staying on as your prevailing wage coordinators.
It's fine with me, as far as I'm concerned, I-
And then the other thing that I have on here is items to be approved by the county administrator outside of session.
And Christie had sent you guys all a document here, I think the top says board?
Yes, there's a letter that I wrote to them.
Yeah, there were some suggested things, I guess I'd, I'd ask you to all look at that, and if you're, if you're generally agreement with that, then Christie, I could work with Laura and, and come up with the proper-
If there's something on there that you don't want on there, strike it off.
Right, right.
Because Laura wants the skinned down list of the final list of items that you guys want to be able to move forward with before she does the, the research to make sure that they are allowed.
And it says here, service contracts under a set dollar amount, and we specify water resources, because they always do a lot of those, I guess we need input from you guys, what would that dollar amount be?
And that's gonna probably be null and void, because I have 29 service contracts from water resources that are going through next Tuesday.
Yee-haw.
But the majority of them have been moved to two and three-year contracts at Ralph's recommendation.
Okay.
So they have moved forward based on his recommendation, but they're set to go through, the majority of them, I think, are already here, and they're set to go through for next Tuesday.
Which I think is the bigger savings than just not having it over there, because it says three times that we don't have to go to the prosecutor's office-
Prosecutor, look, look at them all.
Have them redo all of this.
Yep.
So it just makes better sense.
Yep, absolutely.
Why, why didn't we take off the satisfaction of mortgage, subordination of mortgage, not line items?
Those were the list of items that came in from Community Development, and based on conversation that Dave and I had, those were some of the items that we had taken off.
Why? What was the reason you took them off?
I think we, we just weren't comfortable, you know, because it's, you're basically saying, okay, there's no more, there's no more obligation on a mortgage, that's, that's pretty significant financial thing. I mean, that's ultimately for you guys to decide if you're comfortable with.
I, I can understand the subordination of mortgage, because there may be a decision we have to make on that, but if they satisfy the mortgage-
If they satisfy, I, you know, I, that, that's true.
I mean, I'm not sure we care about that.
That's true.
I mean, we care, we, we like it, it's nice, good public notice thing, but, um-
And you, and the first one that was crossed off, you actually just did, we just had Dave approve, based, under the direction of the board.
Yes.
For the escape.
Yes.
But that's whether you want to continue to do that going forward.
The serv-, service contracts under a certain dollar amount, you're talking about just general contracts, like plumbing the driveway and servicing the-
Well, you could, yeah.
Water department, that kind of stuff?
Um, well, as long as it's under the mid-threshold.
Right.
If it is $50,000 or more, it has to go to bid, and then that, you would have to sign.
Go ahead, because that, that requires a contract, I mean, generally speaking, when there's a contract involved, then I can see a need for it to come through session. If it's a nominal dollar amount, then no problem. But we are committing ourselves to a contract, and so we need to probably-
What they did in Lake County, just as an example, is they allow the administrator to approve a contract up to 50,000, but if it's above 10,000, the administrator has to get written approval from two of the commissioners. If it's below 10,000, the administrator-
I, I would, I personally like something like that, and/or if, if it's of a particular nature, but I don't know what that is, then we at least have to read it in session. So you at least have to give an update, like-
Well, yeah, that's, I, I assume I do that anyway.
So you come in and give an update, so this is what I did, so it goes into the public record and all that kind of stuff. Okay, I'm good with this.
And you're, you're good with all of these, sign it, you know, sign in this stuff? I mean, I'm looking here, liquor licenses, which are pretty much are a slam dunk for us, but the, we answer to the community, not the director.
You usually concur with what the township is going, and all it is, is whether you're requesting a hearing on that license or not.
Right.
And the majority of the time, you just concur with the township.
Yeah, I, I don't ever remember turning one down, but I don't know-
And none of you sign the paperwork. I do, I sign it and send it back to the Division of Commerce.
But process wise, as long as we're aware of it and we have the opt, so let's say you did want to make a stink out of that son of a liquor license, the guy wants to put a bar next to your house, and you want to make a stink over his liquor license. Christie can send out the list ahead of time, say, this is the stuff that Dave is approving, and if you see something on there, you say, no, no, I want that in the agenda, because I want to raise a stink, I don't like this guy.
Correct. And that was one of the things that we talked about with Laura, is that you're gonna get a separate list of things that you have to then say yes or no to Dave approving, and then if you say no to him approving it, then it would go on the regular check.
Yeah, that's one that, that just jumps out at me, because there's always somebody that's too close to church, or it's this, or it's that, or whatever.
And farm market agreements is on here. I went through two years' worth of letters and came up with items in addition to what Community Development sent over, because some of the stuff I know is like, we're gonna use the parking lot.
Well, like, even with that, you know, we, I think that part of that too, and that's something maybe we should have a conversation, maybe what we could do is just have, you know, Jim Flay's come in and Laura, to see if there's some things that we could possibly, you know, help them with as far as, you know, what would they like to see to be able to expedite their efficiency to a little bit, like, for example, like that farm market, you know, we put, you know, there's probably, I, I think that one time there was maybe 30 people, and then there's 30 of these form letters.
Yep.
And it's like, if they can say, okay, it would help us to just do one letter with all these names listed on it and be done with it, then that would just make their job that much more easier, and we wouldn't have 30 different sets of paperwork that just becomes an absolute mess. And if we needed to resend the list, you know, we, we, we take an, you know, or, or, you know, to, to, to be, be able to revise it and say, okay, you know, John Smith, you know, grocery store is not gonna participate, but, you know, Paul Smith is, then we take out John Smith and we, we strike it, but, I have an addendum to it, but at the end of the day, it's like, some of this stuff is just really, really, you know, far stretching, and I think that it's just, if, you know, and if that's something that they're doing it because they think that we want it done this way, then fine, if they're doing it because they have to do it that way, then fine too, but maybe we can talk to them too and see, you know, if there's stuff that we can help them with-
That's a good idea.
-to relieve some of their nonsense, you know? And, and, and another thing too is this, maybe we need to talk to Jim too, if there really is, you know, all this concern of this, then maybe he, we, we give, we, we figure out a way to give him some more support as far as having somebody, you know, if he's gotta look for somebody maybe part-time or something to do certain things, or whatever he needs to do to give him some help on that, on, on, on that, if it's really that, you know, that there's, that, that, you know, that they're having a tough time being able to cover a lot of that, maybe he needs help and we'll help him, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, I understand it, it's, the legal business is a very convoluted mess all the time, you know? You know, and it's, and anytime you're dealing with, you know, laws and, and litigation, it's a lot.
Yeah, I know that there's two contracts that are still outstanding, like have not come before you, that should have been here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. What is with this list? I don't have a problem.
The lease on the new senior center location, I'm not sure about that.
She hasn't, she hasn't got it back.
Yeah.
Oh, my. Yeah, and then the other one was her Schrempf King contract, which I think she finally got back the other day, so.
For Department Agent.
That should just be a renewal.
It's a new one.
Apparently-
Because the contract ended, so it's a new one.
The landlord over in the plaza wanted his base lease used, so it wasn't likely to take the lease, we already had it in effect for Orchard Hills, and just move it over, and he wanted, so Laura's gotta go through it.
There was language that needed to be on there and that kind of stuff, so they've been going back and forth.
So they were supposed to be out there by the end of January, and they're not gonna be able to do that now.
Yes, he still needs 60 or 90 days to do renovations, and he has not started on them because they lost contract.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this list of items is a work in progress.
Correct.
I mean, we can add and delete at any time, if we find-
But what we need to do is we need to set this list, and we do, if possible, we can set this list at reorder, and then that way it sets it up.
Yeah, I have, I have no, no, a problem with that, my, my problem is if, if there's something out there that we're not aware of, or looking at, or thinking of, that comes up as a contingency, can add or delete.
Or you can take out, yeah, say, no, really, that didn't work out well, you guys need-